Thank you. Now I'm going to call to order the regular meeting of the Board of Regents at Delmar College on this date, October 11th, 2022. First, I'm going to check on the -- to determine that we do have a quorum and by roll call. Regent Adami?
Here.
Regent Avert?
Here.
Regent Bennett?
Here.
Is here with us online remotely. Regent Gonzalez? I'm sorry, Garza?
Here.
Something else. I apologize.
That's right.
Regent Kelly?
Here.
And I'm Susan Hutchinson. Also, I will call Regent Scott, Regent Villarreal, and Regent Turner will not be with us today. Start this meeting, please, with me with a moment of silence. Thank you. Thank you. And now, if you'll join me in the Pledge of Allegiance, Regent Garza, if you will please lead us.
(Inaudible) the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God into this common liberty and justice.
Thank you. And now, if you will join us, as is our tradition, in reading the vision statement. "Delmar College will be the premier choice for life-changing educational opportunities provided by responsive, innovative faculty and staff who empower students to improve local and global communities." Delmar College is streaming live audio and video from the official Board of Regents meeting on the college's website in real time, with the exception of portions of the meeting considered as closed session by statute. We're going to begin with some general -- the opportunity for general public comments on any topic. We have no indications of anybody who wanted to speak at this time, so we will proceed with some recognitions and start this meeting off right. I'm going to recognize John DeHulkum to tell us -- bring us your presentations, please.
Thank you. Dr. Shao Shan Chen and Dr. David Sutanto traveled to France to perform this summer. They were invited by several high-level individuals within the Corpus Christi community and from the city they performed in. Dr. Chen and Dr. Sutanto, professors of music, had the honor of performing at the Theatre Municipal -- and please excuse, I don't speak French, it's hard to pronounce some of the words, so excuse me -- the De Corneau Theatre in Ajon, France, on May 26, 2022. The event was sponsored by the Sister City Committee from the city of Corpus Christi as part of the cultural exchange program. The recital program consisted of solo and duo piano works by Chopin, Debussy, American composers such as Copland, Gershwin, and William Hertz. While in Ajon, the Delmar College faculty also gave a master class in L'Essai High School, Bernard Polissi, and the Ajon Conservatory of Music. Dr. Sutanto and Dr. Chen were recognized as truly complementary for playing together, sometimes on the same keyboard, and sometimes on two pianos, but always together. Dr. Shao Shan Chen, professor of music, has contributed her knowledge and expertise in teaching piano at Delmar College for 18 years. Dr. Chen began playing piano at the age of five, and by the age of 18, she made her debut as a piano soloist. Dr. Chen has also won numerous first prizes in national piano while in the Dominican Republic. Dr. David Sutanto, professor of music, has served as an exemplary tenured educator among his peers and students at the college for 20 years. Dr. Sutanto is an active performer as a piano soloist and chamber musician, including duo piano with Dr. Shao Shan Chen. He currently serves as professor of piano at Delmar College and serves different churches on the weekend as their principal pianist. Please join me in congratulating Dr. Chen and Dr. Sutanto for receiving this prestigious recognition for their performance this summer. Could you come forward, please?
Want to say something?
Yes.
Okay, well, thank you again for the honor. I mean, I was not prepared to say something. I thought we were just going to be here, stand up and take a picture and say goodbye. Thank you. Thank you again, and what a wonderful honor for both of us. And again, it is a truly honored experience, opportunity for us to be able to represent the city of Corpus Christi through the invitation from the Sister City Committee of the city of Corpus Christi. And it is truly honored and it's incredible experience for us to be in France for two weeks, work with high school students there, and at the same time, also promoting Delmar College to Ajon in France. And also, I'm actually pleased to have Melody Cooper, who is the chair of the Sister City Committee, being present here, so thank you again.
Thank you. Dr. Chen?
Thank you so much. It was just a wonderful experience for us to experience the French culture, and through this program, yes, we share our talents with local Ajon people. And the most gratifying thing is the friendship that we gain with Ajon Sister City Committee people, and also, you know, the relationship that we build with the students. Like David mentioned, we build that relationship with the students by teaching them, and, you know, we have fun through learning these in these master classes. So, you know, we were very grateful that the Sister City invited -- the committee invited us to do this cultural exchange. Thank you.
Thank you.
May I be permitted to say just a few words?
Please.
You have two marvelous performers and teachers that you should be extremely proud of. The master classes they did were just enthralling, how the students of all ages, from the high school students to the junior high, to the elementary, were drawn in by -- they're so animated and wonderful, and you see true spirit and love for teaching in these wonderful performers. Their performance was -- we had a packed house, they did a masterful job, and we are so proud of them, and thank them for coming on this journey for us.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Melody, for your help, and thank you. We're so glad to share you with the world.
Our next recognition is for Dr. Angelica Gomez Johnson. It's my pleasure to notify you that the Texas Higher Education Coordinating Board officially appointed Dr. Gomez Johnson to serve on the Texas Transfer Advisory Committee. The committee advises the commissioner on the Texas Transfer Frameworks Project, so this is a very important committee. Her three-year appointment began September 1st of this year, and it will end in 2025. Dr. Gomez Johnson will aid in the development of the Texas Transfer Field of Study curriculum for discipline-specific courses and directed electives in an approved Texas Transfer Field of Study curricula. The subcommittee is comprised of 40 faculty members evenly divided between community college and universities, and two ex officio members. The charge of the committee is to use a data-informed approach to support transfer students from community colleges and to maximize the applicability of courses to a major when they transfer to a university. Dr. Gomez Johnson, if you don't already know, is our curriculum manager of planning and institutional effectiveness. Her expertise in the discipline will further the development of this important transfer committee and the transferability of our courses. So I'd like Dr. Gomez Johnson to come forward, and I want to have you join me in congratulating her.
Thank you. I appreciate the support, and I'm very proud to be able to represent Delmar College and work with our transfer initiatives for Delmar College and the state of Texas.
Thank you for very important work you're doing. Thank you. Dr. Halkum, if you'll give us your student success report.
Okay, today I'd like to highlight the dental programs. So we're talking about dental hygiene and dental assistance. So we have an AAS in dental assisting, a dental assisting Level 2 certificate, and an AAS in dental hygiene. Our dental programs are accredited by the Commission on Dental Accreditation, also called CODA. Our dental students and faculty serve our community in many ways. For an example, this past year in June of 2022, the students and faculty provided the dental services by participation in the Second Annual Operation Health and Wellness. This was a medical and dental mission led by the military in partnership with Nuasis County and other community partners. So they provided services for no cost to the community. Our faculty and students also, in August, participated in the annual KEDT Kids Festival in which oral health care was emphasized. And so they handed out free toothbrushes and toothpaste and gave flyers about our free dental clinic services that you see also in your packet. So you can see that our clinic does oral cancer screening, fluoride applications, intraoral examinations, teeth cleaning, dental sealants, medical history, blood pressure screening, periodontal assessments, periodontal therapy, and X-rays. They do quite a bit, and so the students and faculty here are extremely busy. Now, our dental clinic served a lot of patients. In the 2020 to 21 year, they served 547 patients. That was estimated to be an in-kind contribution of $326,000. 2021 to 2022, they served 725 patients, and that's an in-kind contribution of $424,000. Now, we had, you know, COVID. If we remember, we had COVID, and so they had some struggles, you know, during that time. They couldn't do in-house or clinicals outside, but they worked through that. In fall of 2020, they were able to run the clinic Monday through Saturday to make up for time lost during that peak of COVID when we told everyone they could not come in. But in spite of all their struggles during that time -- oops, just a minute.
You can do that.
Let me go back. We see that they did a tremendous job on their exams, and so the dental assisting certification written exam, 100% pass rate. The dental hygiene licensure written exam on the second try -- 91%. You can see the dental hygiene clinical exam, 2020 to 21, 100% pass rate on the first attempt. 21 to 22, 95% on the second attempt. They've done a tremendous job, and the free services that they give to our community are tremendous. And I do have Eva Sepulveda, Assistant Professor and Program Director of the Dental Programs, here, if you do have any questions. But I do want us to congratulate our dental students, faculty, and staff on such a job well done. Eva, why don't you come up?
Yes.
Do you have any questions?
Thank you, Dr. Halkum. Good afternoon, Board of Regents. It is an honor and a privilege to be here, representing both the dental assisting and dental hygiene programs. We're just honored that you're highlighting our programs. Our programs have been a part of the college for slightly over 50 years and servicing our community for slightly over 50 years, so it's just an honor and a privilege to be here today with you. Do you have any questions for me?
Thank you for your fantastic work under very difficult circumstances particularly.
Let me just say one more thing.
Please.
I always have something to say. Out of our -- let's see, we have a total of 16 full-time and part-time adjuncts -- or I'm sorry, full-time, part-time faculty, 13 are Delmar College graduates.
Very good.
So just let you -- and we're very proud of that, and we let the students know that too.
So we know they were well-trained too.
So good. Exactly. So we're providing the same, the best quality service that we can to them as what we were provided, and so we're trying to keep, you know, we're honoring that and keep that quality of service going. So you got that. It's very important to us.
Thank you for that. Thank you.
You got it. Thank you.
Dr. Ascomia, can you give us your president's report, please?
Yes, ma'am, Chair. Thank you very much, and good afternoon, everyone. It's great to see everyone. So we've got a couple of things going on here. So I have a compliance thing that I'm going to have to read, so bear with me. It's part of my annual reporting of compliance for, as per Texas Education Code. But as required under Texas Education Code, Section 51253(c), the institution's CEO is to submit a report to the governing body once during each fall or spring semester concerning sexual misconduct reports received by employees under Texas Education Code, Section 51.252. For the purpose of compliance, the submitted summary report includes all required reporting information for the period of September 1, 2021, through August 31, 2022. Excuse me. September 1, 2021, through August 31, 2022. That's a lot of -- that's a handful, mouthful. Per requirements, this summary report is posted on the college website, and a certification of compliance will be submitted to the Texas Higher Education Coordinating Board no later than Halloween, October 31, 2022. So that is my compliance piece that I had to submit to you all for your review. Next, I'd like to give you an update on the Texas Commission on Community College Finance, of which I've been a part of for the past little over a year now, or about a year. The commission is finalizing -- is coming to the finalization of the report to be submitted for everyone's consumption just before the 88th legislation, legislature, excuse me, which will begin in January. So that's coming to the end here next month. This is part of a major effort to change the way -- again, I'm glad there's so many people here, so many faculty and staff members here. This is going to change the way the state funds all aspects of community college finance, so there's some major change coming. Of course, we've got to get through the legislative session, so stay tuned. Our recommendations really are around outcomes funding, affordability for students, and investment in building college capacity, especially the smaller institutions. But as it relates to the outcomes of funding, basically is talking about adopting a funding model. We're proposing to the legislature that we adopt a funding model that accounts for the higher costs associated with effective and high-demand career fields throughout the community college, throughout the community college instruction. Affordability to students is a no-brainer, but it is something that has received more attention than I've seen in my over two and a half decades now towards that end. And it's designed -- what we're working on is implementing an ongoing program that encourages support, supports community colleges in the way of public partnerships to support the way we are able to stand up programs and provide affordability to our students. Our students will be TEOG, the Texas Equalization Opportunity Grant, will be expanded, is being proposed to be expanded, to our students from a very, what we would describe as a minuscule amount, to a much more substantial amount. This is statewide community, student support that the state is looking at investing in students for the first time in a long time. So basically, you know, outcomes funding, student affordability, and standing up and using state funds to support smaller institutions. That's it in a nutshell. This is designed to just be a teaser, really, a kind of a little commercial. Stay tuned. I will have the full report. Right now, all I have is the latest iteration that I've got to still submit some changes to, but I want everybody to know that things are going to change, and you have to believe that it's going to be for the better. They're talking about significant, an infusion of significant dollars into community colleges that we have not seen in more than a generation or two, so stay tuned for that. Finally, I would just like to conclude my report by saying "and" because, as a member of the commission, it was -- I took so many opportunities to go up to Austin and work with the Commissioner of Higher Ed and the appointee, Dr. Harrison Keller, Commissioner of Higher Ed, his staff, and our appointed chairman, Mr. Woody Hunt out of El Paso. I went up there so many times, and I said, "Look," they asked me one time, they said, "Is there anything we can do for you, Mark?" I said, "Yeah, can you do one thing, Mr. Commissioner? Can you come to Corpus Christi?" And I got him. And so, as we say in fishing, I set the hook, and it worked. And so he's going to be coming down, and there's going to be a regional meeting of presidents from Alamo South and trustees, and so we're going to have him here and engaging him with the area presidents of the South Texas region to talk about the purposes of this commission and next steps as we prepare for this 88th legislature, which is in front of us. Lots and lots of work going on. That's where I've been more, that's where my head has been, whether I've been there physically or not. My head has been in Austin working on this. I'm proud to say that right now, that we're talking about a number that's already publicly being used. It's a starting point of $650 million to be infused. Now, if you think about $2.2 billion that the state uses, excuse me, invests in community colleges every year, and this is a starting point for a conversation, it is a significant investment by the state of Texas that is being considered. Again, stay tuned. We've got to get through the legislative session, but this is our turn. Never have we experienced anything like this. For all you legislative folks who are watching the laws and everything else, Title III, excuse me, SB 3, that occurred a couple sessions ago for the change of finance for K through 12, was the predecessor to what we're dealing with right now with the commission. So they did it for K through 12, they're working on it. There were some great things that happened in SB 3. Now it's our turn, so stay tuned. And anybody who wants to go to the legislature, I extend that invitation every year. Once we start up in January, just give me a call and let me know, and we'll meet down in Austin because we're going to need everybody's help. Thank you. I'm, ma'am, Chair. Regents, that concludes my report. I'm ready for any questions.
Thank you. Any questions for any of the regions? Thank you. Continue to burn up the road back and forth from Austin.
I will.
Keep at that.
Yes, ma'am.
Our final reports having to do with Annual Security and Safety Report. Tammy McDonald and Lauren White, please.
Thank you. Chief White and I please distribute the 2022 Annual Security and Safety Report for Delmar College. There was an electronic copy in your board materials, and you would have been given a hard copy prior to the meeting today. This report is prepared annually to be in compliance with the Gene Clery Disclosure of Campus Security Policy and Campus Crime Statistics Act, known as the Clery Act, and its subsequent amendments. Chief White led this committee, and under her leadership, we have produced this report. And on that committee, I served Lenora Key, Cheryl Sanders, Rita Hernandez, Chris Tweedle, Jessica Alanis, and Augustine Rivera. So I want to thank them for their time and effort on this committee and specifically for this report and our compliance. I'm going to let the chief give you a summary of the actual report. Thank you.
So as Ms. McDonald stated, it is a requirement by federal law to be in compliance, all post-secondary institutions participating in Title IV Student Financial Assistance Programs must disclose crime statistics and other security information to students and the public by October 1st of each year. You will find that Delmar College's stats begin on page 19 in the book and show the reportable crimes for the last three years. I would like to point out that the majority of the crimes that are listed in our statistics do not involve students or our employees. We're here to give you the copy of the report and to assure the board that we were in compliance with the October 1st deadline. Do you have any questions for us?
Any questions? Yes. Regent Kelly?
Okay, I noticed on the report, we're reporting crimes on public property.
Yes, sir.
But that's not campus property.
Right, so like, we have to report the street. If it happens in front of our college on the street, at the aviation, out at the airport, the airport is considered public property, and we have to report the crimes that occur within that area according to the Clery Act.
And does our police department have any jurisdiction in those areas?
Only in the area that is where our classes are held. We do not have jurisdiction in that area.
Okay, thank you.
But we're responsible to report them. Yes, sir.
Right.
Other questions? Thank you for that.
Yes, ma'am.
Now we'll move on to our consent agenda. Are there any items that any region wants to pull from this? We've got the approval of the minutes and the acceptance of any investments for September. I mean, heard not. Do I need -- I need a motion to that effect. Is that correct? All right. Have a motion in a second. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any public comment on that, on anything on the consent agenda? None. All right, thank you. Now we'll move to the regular agenda. First, Dr. Halkum, if you will present your first recommendation.
I am pleased to present three individuals today, Mac Aperspock, Judy Phillips, and David Haddix, to you for consideration of emeritus status. Emeritus status is a distinction that is reserved for those faculty who have shown distinguished service, significant contributions to higher education, meritorious teaching, and special honors. This is a very important and very distinguished honor. Your packet contains the policy covering the eligibility for consideration of emeritus status and the process for nominations. Eligibility for the award of emeritus status includes distinction in the areas of faculty fundamental responsibilities, including professional practice, educational growth, and institutional and community service. Your packet lists the areas of distinguished service. Within the body of the resolution that I will read, there will be a list of examples for each of those areas. A person upon receiving emeritus status will gain privileges, such as being listed in our college catalog, our college directory, mailing list, just to name a few of the privileges. Our faculty emeritus considerations today were recommended by the dean, the faculty council, and the chief academic officer, following the outlined policy and procedures. The packet also contains specific criteria and distinction in professional practices, I've mentioned, educational growth, institutional and community service. I'm going to read a resolution in recognition of each individual, which highlights their achievements, and then I will ask the Board of Regents to accept the resolution and confer emeritus status. Our first person today is Mac Aperspock. Mr. Aperspock, can you come forward, please? Whereas Mr. Mac Aperspock, professor of radio, television, served as an exemplary tenured educator among his peers and students at the college for 37 years, from 1984 to 2021. He first started teaching at Delmar College in a non-tenured, full-time position in 1981. Whereas Mr. Aperspock was recognized by the Texas Association for Broadcasters at the 2019 Educator of the Year. He served as a leader in his discipline throughout Texas by serving as the president of the Texas Association of Broadcast Educators from 1992 to '93, and then as secretary treasurer for the same organization for over a quarter of a century. Through his dedication to education, Mr. Aperspock created opportunities for students by preparing them for transferred four-year programs and for careers in radio, TV production. He consistently managed to obtain funding to update the studio's equipment and structure furnishings to create a conducive, technologically oriented environment for the students. Most importantly, Mr. Aperspock served as a mentor and motivator to all of his students. Whereas Mr. Aperspock provided committed service to the college as a member of various committees, such as the library committee and general education committee, he relentlessly participated in professional development to stay abreast of his ever-changing field. Additionally, Mr. Aperspock shared his expertise with the community by working with the television ministry for the First Baptist Church, served as a judge for the Skills USA competition for broadcast news production, and coordinated the UIL regional journalism competitions for multiple years. He also dedicated his time to supporting the Texas Association of Broadcast Educators by researching and authoring two chapters in the history of the organization. Now therefore be it resolved that the Delmar College Board of Regents formally acknowledge and extends its profound appreciation for service to the college and community by recognizing Mr. Aperspock with the title of Professor Emeritus on this day, October 11, 2022. I would now like to ask the board to accept this resolution and confer emeritus status for Mac Aperspock.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to accept this recommendation? I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, and all those in favor, please.
Aye.
Aye. Do I need to ask for public comments on this? Public comments? Public comments? Yes. Please come forward.
My name is Dr. Patricia Walter, and I thank you for recommending Mr. Apperspock. He was my teacher when I was at Delmar College. He was my colleague when I came to Delmar College, and then he was, I was his boss. But I will say that all of the things that he taught me in, as a student, I used throughout my career. He's been with me throughout my entire career, and I want to thank you publicly.
Yes. Well, Patty kind of stole some of my thunder. Thank you for the honor as Professor Emeritus. The other day, I looked up the correct spelling of emeritus in writing an email, and I was struck by the definition, retired or honorably discharged from active professional duty. And I was in the military, so that sounds interesting, but retaining the title of one's office or position, that's, and I felt that sums up nicely. So to be honored as Professor Emeritus is truly an honor to be recognized by Delmar College. I'm going to have an educational emphasis on this, but I will note that three years ago, you recognized me, as Dr. Holcomb said, by being named the Texas Association Broadcasters Educator of the Year. Well, that was an, an honor by TAB via my colleagues at other institutions of higher education. And of course, we were being, you know, recognized for teaching students to go into the field of broadcasting. But this one today is very special. First of all, I want to thank my wife. Sorry for emotion here. As an influence in becoming an educator, if I had not met her, I think my career in broadcasting would have gone another direction. Because she is Australian, we decided we wanted to fine-tune our careers in media and go into something that would allow us to remain connected with the media, but also give us some time to go back to Australia to visit family and friends and have some weeks to, to do that. And so we went back to graduate school and got our master's degrees. Ruth concluded her education career at Texas A&amp;M Corpus Christi in teaching media courses in twenty nineteen after being stricken by Guillain-Barre syndrome, which has left her confined to a wheelchair, and she is now dealing with breast cancer. My appreciation of being nominated for this honor goes to the current chair of Communications, Languages, and Reading, which is Dr. Dale Anderson, and then of course, Dr. Patricia Walter. Both have been very supportive of the radio-television program. Now, in class, particularly my Television Production One class, I would talk about education as how important it was. And in fact, I would take a time in a semester towards preregistration when I would talk about it. One of my students actually dubbed that the Dr. Phil lecture. And so thereafter, I used to use, I said, okay, here comes the Dr. Phil lecture. But of course, education is so important, and I would encourage him as to where they should go and what they should do. There are some PhDs in the legacy, and some I'll note. First is Dr. Walter, who I said stole some of my thunder. Yes, I had her as a student. In fact, when she was named as the chair, I kind of go, now, did we have any runions when I was her instructor or not? I couldn't remember any. All I remember is this vibrant, energetic student that I had at that particular time. Couple other former students or faculty here at Delmar College, Robert Mylenberg in Journalism and Bobby Claypack. Locally, I know of several former students teaching media-related courses at high schools. In fact, Dr. Catherine Hewitt, now the PhD, is at King High School, and she sent me a photo last week of five individuals in media courses here in Corpus Christi, teaching media-related courses at King, Ray, Miller, and I think Carroll. Now, I want to express my appreciation of former students who are affiliated with institutional higher education, but not in the teaching area. These include Chris Ambrose and Adriana Garza Flores at Texas A&amp;M Kingsville in College Relations, Richard Guerrero, Texas A&amp;M Corpus Christi in College Relations, then here at Delmar College, Dr. Carlos Karanzaway in Institutional Research, Michael Bratton, and Jason Houlihan to College Relations, Delmar Television, Robert Pettis, and I would be remiss if I did not mention Gerard Menios. Now, I want to close with a story that illustrates the strength and impression that Delmar College has and the recognition of your leadership as board and administration. I was visiting with a book rep some years ago, and the salesperson said that in visiting colleges and institutions around the state of Texas, he said there are only two community colleges that, he said, when I step on campus, it gives me the atmosphere of being at a four-year institution, not a community college. He said Amarillo College, Delmar College. Thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to consider that ovation to be the vote, but I think I better do it formally. We do have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Thank you very much. I think that's a great lesson to teach, as if your student may someday be your boss. I think that's a great way to.
It does happen.
Would you continue, Dr. Holcomb?
Yes. Next, I'd like to read a resolution. Dr. Judy Phillips. Judy, could you come forward, please? Whereas, Dr. Judith Phillips, professor of kinesiology, served as an exemplary tenured educator among her peers and students at the college for thirty-five years, from nineteen eighty-seven to twenty twenty-two. Whereas, Dr. Phillips left an indelible mark upon our institution after forty-two total years of teaching and advocating for physical fitness and wellness. During her career at Delmar College, she served the college and the department in various capacities with distinction, including seven years as chairperson of the Department of Kinesiology and Education. During her tenure, she taught a broad spectrum of courses and served as the intramural sports director for four years. Before arriving at Delmar College, she was the intramural director at Stephen F. Austin University. Whereas, Dr. Phillips, Phillips demonstrated a wide range of expertise and versatility as a professor. She taught activity, fitness, and lecture courses that covered topics such as fitness conditioning, racquetball, swimming, water aerobics, introduction to physical fitness and sport, foundations of kinesiology, health and lifestyle, and drug use and abuse. She was instrumental in designing and implementing online courses for the department through her development of the Kinesiology twelve thirty-eight Introduction to Physical Fitness and Sport course. Furthermore, she developed and implemented a personal training Level One certificate and an Associate of Applied Science in Fitness and Exercise Science degree to provide students additional academic program options. Her hard work and continued growth as a professor laid the foundation for many of the formats used today in the department. As a professor, she was dedicated to educating and teaching students essential skills and health concepts to improve their lives by giving them the tools they needed to embark on lifelong physical fitness and wellness. As evident of her leadership abilities, Dr. Phillips was recognized by her peers as a recipient of the twenty eighteen Eileen Creighton Award for Teaching Excellence and the twenty twelve Texas Association of Health Physical Education Recreation and Dance, or the Taftford Honor Award. She served in many institutional committees, including chairs council, pathways, student learning committee, curriculum committee, and faculty council, as well as maintaining lifelong membership in Taftord. Now therefore be it resolved that the Delmar College Board of Regents formally acknowledges and extends its profound appreciation for service to our college and community by recognizing Dr. Judy Phillips with the title of Professor Emeritus on this day, October eleventh, twenty twenty-two. So I would now ask for you to accept this resolution and confer emeritus status for Judy Phillips.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to accept this resolution?
Sooner.
I have a motion. Do I have a second? And a second? Any comments among the, the Board of Regents? Any public comments? Having heard none, I ask for a vote on this. All in favor of the acceptance of this recommendation, say aye. Aye? Any opposed? All right. Thank you. Any words from our honoree?
Thank you. So far, I'd say I've spent probably more than fifty percent of my life here in Corpus, as I wasn't born and raised here, but more than that, probably more than eighty percent of my professional career. While my, the foundation for my teaching was laid by my sister, because I had her at Stephen F. Austin, I would venture to say that I was raised by Delmar professionally and personally here. I can't imagine working anyplace else. The opportunities that I've had here were, have been phenomenal, and I've always said when one door closes, another one opens, and that happened for me here. Every time I needed a change, Delmar provided me with one. And what I really want to say today is to thank Dr. Eskamia. He and I have had conversations before, and it always has amazed me that he would listen to me. I mean, I was, you know, at times I was just a faculty member, and he, he would listen to me, and I had never had anybody who was in a upper-level administrative position willing to do that. So, Dr. Eskamia, thank you. Thank you. And I, and thank Delmar for my life here, basically. Thank you.
Thank you.
We have Mr. David Haddix here. Uh, David Haddix, could you come forward, please? Whereas, Mr. David Haddix, Associate Professor of Computer Science, served as an exemplary tenured educator among his peers and students at the college for nineteen years, from two thousand two to twenty twenty-one, as an adjunct instructor from nineteen eighty-five to two thousand one. Whereas, one of his distinguishing roles was that of managing all of the contacts for our regionally intensive Center for High Schools and other community colleges across the state, for the college's Cisco Academy as its regional center designation. During his tenure as a faculty member, Mr. Haddix served as the chair of the Computer Science Engineering and Advanced Technology Department for seven years. While leading the department in various capacities, he collaborated with his department faculty in implementing new instructional programs to prepare students with the computer technology and analytical skills set required in the computer science field. Mr. Haddix communicated with other institutions to ensure that they also maintain the high standards required to give students the advantage and opportunity to earn a variety of valuable credentials and course credit for their work, starting in the high schools within our region. Mr. Haddix advised a number of students to identify the pathway that they would need to complete their individual goal within the many disciplines associated with the department. Whereas, his commitment to lifelong learning was exhibited by ensuring that funding was available or attainable to advanced teaching individuals, the expertise that they would benefit from, and to be able to transfer knowledge to our students in the ever-changing field. During his tenure as faculty, he worked with the department faculty members to secure the coordinating board awards for skill standard-based SSB programs in the department. There was a significant accomplishment because there were several community colleges that only had one or no of the SSB programs, and this college had earned five awards in the department. Quite an achievement. Now therefore be it resolved that the Delmar College Board of Regents formally acknowledges and extends its profound appreciation for service to our college and community by recognizing Mr. David Haddix and the title of Associate Professor Emeritus in this day, October eleventh, twenty twenty-two. So now I ask you to accept this resolution and confer emeritus status for Mr. David Haddix.
Thank you, Dr. Holcomb. Do I hear a motion to accept this recommendation?
Sooner.
And a second? Did I hear a second? Yes, sorry. And any discussion among the Board of Regents? Any questions? Discussion? Any public comments? Having heard none, I'll ask for a vote on accepting this recommendation. All those in favor, say aye, please?
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations.
Congratulations.
I want to thank the board for this honor. It's been a great honor for me. I, in two thousand two, when I applied for the job of being an instructor in computer science, I was torn between the industry that I had come from and the, and the prospect of working with students to help them learn and to help them adapt to life in the new technological, technological world. Thank you for this honor. I want to thank my wife for her support all these years, and all of the faculty that I've worked with in, in the department, who have been so supportive of me. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. As I was hearing the number of years and times and classes, I was thinking how difficult it would be to, but, but maybe possible, to figure out how many students have been touched by, by these professors, and then I thought how impossible it would be to determine how many lives through the community and through the next generations have been touched. So this is the, this is the heart of Delmar. Thank you for all your service and your inspiration. That I will turn to, we're going to reorder a little bit. I'm going to go to, on the agenda, what was number seven, which is a discussion and possible action regarding the college's quarterly investment report, and have Mr. Garcia present here.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, Mr. President, members of the board. Today, we have Mr. Dwayne Malkaway from Patterson and Associates, a meter investment management company, who will discuss the college's investment performance and strategies in pursuit of higher yields in light of continued changes in our economy. Following the presentation, there is an action item for the board to accept today's investment reports.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Thank y'all for having me today, and we'll see. We are just wrapped up your Q four, the end of the fiscal year. Obviously, this has been an exciting marketplace for reinvesting at yields that haven't been seen in decades. Let's see here. So obviously, we touched on this a little bit the last time I was here. The Fed has embarked on fighting inflation, and now we've seen three consecutive Fed meetings where the Fed has raised seventy-five basis points in an attempt to tackle this inflationary pressure that's staring us in the face. The silver lining that's finally maybe coming about a little bit is we saw energy prices, crude oil, actually at one point here in the past month, got all the way back to the same levels pre-U.K. and Russia warfare. So again, now OPEC's talking about cutting production, which is kind of raising it back up, but I think that's kind of going to be, that's going to be kind of the, the thing that can either really bring inflation down, is just taming crude oil prices and getting prices back down at the pump for our everyday America. And the, the next thing that's in the backdrop of that, again, I think we've talked about, the Fed is purposefully raising rates to cool the economy, which will eventually spill us into a recession, although in this area, you probably won't see it that much because you guys are exploding around here. But again, let's just kind of walk through it. We've seen, you know, the two-year treasury yield, I think I touched on it last time, one year ago in September was a point two percent. It is now at a four point two percent. So to see a full four percent increase hasn't happened that many times in, in our country's economic cycles. Yep, there we go. Again, this is just a depiction of the, the treasury yield curve going back to, you know, the lower bar was back in December thirty-first at the end of the calendar year. The orange line is just depicting where that treasury yield curve was at the end of July versus August. And one of the interesting And one of the interesting things that, again, is occurring is we're starting to see a yield curve inversion, which means the short-term interest rates are higher than, you know, a three-year and a five-year and a 10-year Treasury rate are all beneath a one-year Treasury yield. And what that tends to say is that the market is already starting to aggressively purchase higher yields in anticipation of the Fed ending their rate hike cycle. But that officially has not come to a conclusion yet. They're just raising up the Fed funds rate on the short end of the curve, which is, you know, helping short-term money market instruments especially. Specifically to the portfolio, here we go. This is the snapshot of Delmar's portfolio as of August 31st. The weighted average yield was 386 days, which was 1.06 years. Weighted average yield of all the funds combined was 0.867%. And then you can see that bar chart at the top to the right depicts about 52% of all the cash is domiciled in the local maintenance account. And some of the other more significant boxes would be the construction funds, which continue to dwindle quarter by quarter. We did see a pretty good spend coming out in this Q4 relative to Q3, and we'll touch on that in just a moment. But the maturity distribution in the bar chart beneath it just says that, you know, again, we're, for the most part, anything that is maturing that was a little longer term in nature, we're keeping it short-term in anticipation of the rapid expenditures being experienced through the construction and bond funds. So about almost 25% of the portfolio is in cash, money markets, investment pools. Then we've got 15% of the portfolio with very short-term maturities under a year. And then we've got about 49% of the portfolio is just past one year, out to two years, and then just a little bit of a sliver, past two years, out to a max of three years, would be the last 12% of that pie. And then, just looking at the funds that, you know, that we talk about breaking out the portfolio, including the bond funds individually, this pie, again, is just highlighting the fact that the preponderance of the funds are located in your local maintenance fund. You've got a little bit in your INS funds to pay debt service. And then again, those construction funds continue to become a smaller piece of the puzzle. But the 2020 bonds still represented about 16% of the total funds, and the 2018 construction bonds still represent about 18% of all the funds, with the plant fund maintaining 9%, just under 10%. That 2018 tax bond B was totally expended as of the previous quarter. Okay? Here, we're just looking at your pooled funds, anything except for those remaining construction funds, the bond funds. Again, we're highlighting the Q4 and the average of the entire fiscal year. But you can see where Q4 book value was at 93.2 million versus last year, just slightly beneath it at 94.4 million. The market value of the portfolio, again, is right, 91 and a half, almost 91 and a half million at the end of this Q4 versus last Q4, it was at 94.4 million. The weighted average maturity of these non-construction funds is 230 days, and it was about 275 days last year. The yield for the portfolio, you can see it's come up, obviously, it's benefited from the Fed raising its short-term rates. So naturally, that yield is, it's almost a 110 now versus a .26 a year ago. And again, we're trying to chase a Treasury yield that's rising rapidly, but the average of the six-month T-bill for, you know, over the past six months has been a 197. And a year ago, that was almost a zero, it was a .06. But the total net earnings for Q4 was 312,000, and for the year, the net earnings of the portfolio excluding your bond funds was $594,000, which, again, was a nice, a very nice pickup from where we were last year this time. Again, this is just depicting the pooled funds from the previous quarter to the current quarter. I think one of the bigger changes that you saw was the fact that the LGIP, which is your pooled funds, it was 36% at the end of May, and on the chart on the left, you can see that has gone down to 27%. Again, that's a function of, you know, expenditures primarily. You see the portion that did increase was the agents, federal agency notes went from 7% to 28%. And commercial paper, which we'll continue to try to leverage when possible, but we're trying to remain very liquid. We've just seen a lot of those maturities roll off and remain in cash while we're seeing these disbursements that are on the horizon. And the yields in the sectors really haven't, you know, seen significant change. CP rates, obviously, will continue to go up, so the average went from a .63 to a .8. The municipal bonds remain pretty static. The government investment pools is where we're seeing the largest increase, and that's a function of that Fed funds rate increase that's, you know, gone up to the tune of now 225 basis points over the last 90 days or so. So that'll continue to rise as well. And now we're just taking a look at the bond funds individually. This is the remaining 2018 bond funds. At the end of the quarter there, not the far-left box, but the one right next to it, specifically, there were 25.6 million remaining in book value there. And you look at where that was a year ago, that was 49.6 million. So you've seen that spend, well, that was the fiscal year average was 49.6. So we've seen this, these funds have come down significantly from where they were a year ago. And again, I think by this time next year, that'll probably be around 10 or less, I would imagine, the way it's spending out. The WAM has increased, but that's just a function of some of the investments that have remained in the portfolio. The cash is being spent down, so it's making it look like it's increasing. But what's happening is the cash that has overnight, you know, one-day rate has been dwindling, which is making that, given the optics that the WAM's going up there. The yield on that portfolio ended at a .52%, which was not much change year over year. And again, again, we're seeing the Treasury yields going up significantly. Like, in the Q4 alone, it was 197, but if you average it out over the past four quarters, the six-month yield has been a 110. So the earnings on the remaining funds came in for the quarter at 33,000. And for the year, despite the spendout, you ended the year out at 168 million, and it's about $20 million less than it was in Q4 of last year. Did that, that's still the same slide. And here's your 2020 bond funds. Again, it's 24.1 million. If we look at the fiscal year 2021 average was 76.4 million, and we ended this year at 43.9, so call it 44 million. So you saw that, that is, we've seen those funds decline by about 45%, and that's just your projects at work. The market value of the remaining funds was just under 23 million at the end of Q4. The fiscal year average came in at 42.5. Again, the WAM there is 617 days, which was slightly higher than where it started the year at 594 days. Yield's gone up slightly, but there hasn't been a whole lot of reinvestment at all. As a matter of fact, it's just been maturities going into cash and getting spent out. So at the, at the end of the day, those construction funds consist primarily of U.S. agency securities, those that are actively invested, is 69%, with municipal bonds representing the other 31% of the actively invested securities. The yields there, again, a lot of those coupons were purchased over a year ago. We're not doing any reinvesting of active securities, other than letting them mature and be spent out of cash. So if y'all have any additional questions on specifically the portfolio, or more specifically what you think about the economy, or where you want to prognosticate rates might be a year from now, we can talk about that.
Any questions from the Board? Do you have a comment?
I do have a question.
Sure.
You made a specific pause, talking about recession, what it means. You didn't say local, but the implication was statewide and/or local? And what is your, what is your, what are your comments around that?
I think the feeling is nationally, with the rate, rates are going up. It's driving up, you know, lending rates, you know, we're seeing mortgage applications are declining pretty significantly, because now 30-year mortgages are approaching 7% area. So the game has dramatically changed. You had a lot of people that were maybe flipping houses. The speculation has kind of gone out of the market. Days-on markets rising, prices are being cut. That's, you know, probably will have some effect here. But it just on down the line, like automobile loans are going up. So in general, just the cost of certain things that a year ago, you know, had very reasonable cost of entry, where a lot of people would go up and say, here's what I can afford per month. And maybe they were taking a stab at a bigger piece of property because of record-low interest rates. And now, again, those are the things that are kind of contributing to a larger recessionary outlook. And then, again, the cost of energy, everything that's on our shelves when we go grocery shopping has come up, and that's simply because the guys have to pay more to stock it on the shelves, because the cost of transportation is getting passed on. And so that stuff is, you know, it's unavoidable, but I think at the end of the day, if we can kind of keep on chipping energy prices back down to normalcy, that we'll kind of get that flame in check. But all the other things, the consumer in general, not necessarily just here in this area.
Sure.
The consumer nationally will definitely be feeling it.
Yeah. I got to say, I went to HEB yesterday at lunchtime, and I wanted to buy apples, some to leave in my office and some to take home. I bought eight apples, and I walked out, it was 10 bucks. It was $10 and change for eight apples, for Granny Smith's and four Pink Ladies. I mean, come on.
Yeah.
They were great apples, don't get me wrong. They're already gone, my kids found them, but 10 bucks.
Yeah.
I get it, I get it.
It's crazy. Same thing, you know, that your Walmart bill's, you know, gone up probably 50%.
230 bucks the other day, and I had two bags. I asked my wife, I said, "Stop." We did the self-check, and I said, "Stop, wait a minute, 230 bucks. There's a little basket. What do we, what happened?" And we added it up, and it was 230 bucks.
Yeah, it's crazy. And those that did survive, the restaurants and stuff that did survive, I'm seeing now, like, you know, bigger parties, you see gratuities built in, and now you may go someplace and it'll be parties of six or more, 18% gratuities just thrown on the bill with another tip spaced below it, and you're like, hey, I don't want to, let me add this up. Anyway, was there any further questions?
Other questions? I will entertain a motion to accept and approve this report. I have a motion, a second. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Thank you. That, that public comment on the investment report, I apologize.
Thank you all for having me.
Thank you. Hearing none, are we okay to have, are we okay in our order that we are so far? Okay, we're accepting that report, and Dr. Garcia, or Mr. Garcia, if you'll continue with the financial report.
Okay, so the college's financial condition continues to weigh heavily on the effects of the pandemic. Despite these vulnerabilities, the college has been able to operate within our planned budget limits with a reported financial surplus for this month of $1.2 million. This surplus is subject to change, to include changes in accounting estimates and adjustments as we begin this year's year-end audit, to be performed by Collier, Johnson, and Woods. Pivoting to the college's operating revenues, the combined revenue total, including state and other revenues, is valued at $107.3 million. This amount is below the planned revenue budget total, with a total value of $110.9 million. The reduction is mainly from tuition and fee revenues that is valued at $3.8 million. This reduction in tuition and fee revenue is offset, is offset by reduced spending in our salary and benefit expense categories valued at $3.9 million, and includes faculty salaries and benefits of approximately $2.7 million. So essentially, tuition revenue contracted, so did our salary and benefits for faculty at the same time. The college has also experienced reduced spending in our non-salary expense and contingency categories with a combined value of $823,000, which is contributing to our current surplus of $1.2 million. If there are no questions, we will move on to the balance sheet on the next slide.
Questions? You can continue.
So as of the end of August, the college has a sound financial position to weather most business interruptions, including the current pandemic, with a cash and investment position of $65.8 million. With that said, the college has sufficient liquidity to pay its current obligations valued at approximately $34.4 million. Madam Chair, Mr. President, and members of the Board, if there are no questions, this concludes the financial reporting presentation. I now ask the Board to accept the quarterly financial reports for the period ending August 31st, 2022, if there are no questions.
Thank you. Entertaining a motion to accept this report? And a second?
Second.
Send a second. Thank you. All in favor of accepting the college's quarterly financial report, say aye. Aye. All opposed? No opposition. Thank you.
Great, thank you.
We have that accepted report. And now we can move back, the next element will be presented by Tammy McDonald regarding the audit reports.
Thank you. As part of our audit process, our internal audit process, the Board of Regents Audit Committee met on September 29th, 2022. Daniel Graves and Brandon Tenos, partners with Weaver, were present at that meeting and reviewed internal audit status and report information with the committee. Today, Dan and Brandon are both here, and they will provide the full Board with an audit status and report information.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
So we do have for you, pardon, status of our board report. In that status, we'll have the status of our 2022 remaining audits, which are the purchasing, audit over purchasing, internal audit follow-ups of prior internal audit findings, and then the last two reports for this year over construction management, and then in information security. That will be presented by our partner who conducted the information security audit, Tripp Hellman, and that will be in closed session due to the sensitive nature of information security and cybersecurity, as well as our 2022 annual internal audit report and the 2023 internal audit plan that's combined in that report. Brandon's going to cover the purchasing and internal audit follow-ups, as he conducted those and led those for our team.
Thank you, Dan. Good afternoon. I am pleased to give the status of our first is our internal audit of purchasing. This is an audit that we initiated during the summer, late summer timeframe. Our audit procedures are still in progress. We are wrapping up field work even this week with purchasing management. Due to some staffing changes within purchasing, along with some high-volume procurement activity with Oso Creek, and also with the end of the fiscal year, kind of delayed some of our procedures since we wanted to be flexible to meet the college's priorities for that timeframe. But we are working with them right now to collaborate and ensure we can complete our testing and come back with you all with a report later on this year. And so, the scope of that audit, just to reiterate what was on the plan, included evaluation of risk and internal controls in place regarding the college's purchasing cycle. So with that cycle included the full purchasing processes that occur from purchase orders and bidding process award to using our inter-local and cooperative agreements, along with our contract negotiation approval, vendor management, and vendor acceptance processes. along with our contract negotiation approval, vendor management, and vendor acceptance processes. So now I'm going to turn to our internal audit follow-up. So we were able to perform three, perform and report to you all three follow-up audits that we performed, that we completed in FY '22. Each one of these are aged, starting in from 2015 to 2018, audit reports, and happy to report that all of those have been closed. So this will be the final reporting of those. The first one is the admissions and registrar audit that we initiated originally in 2015. We had two partially remediated findings. One was over advisor training, and one was over advising continuing education. The training one has been remediated as part of the college's QEP implementation of really establishing a training process and ensuring that we do have a training program and so forth for both full-time and part-time faculty advisors. And the second, advisor continuing education, very similar to the training aspect, is having to ensure that we have annual updates and we're having required trainers, training for full-time advisors along with those part-time faculty advisors. And part of the QEP goal was 100 faculty and professional advisors attending professional training, which was exceeded by 119 in FY '22 in the areas that we tested. With those two being remediated, we enclosed, we consider that audit completed. And so no further follow-up recommendations are recommended for admissions and registrar. The second is student services, so that audit was originally completed in 2019. We had one partially remediated finding that we were performing follow-up procedures on, including documentation of advising sessions. And so we did, were able to close this with management by looking at the processes and training that have been updated and that all full-time advisors have completed that training. We also evaluated the student advising sessions records, including both in colleague and Civitas. And we did identify that there has been increases in documentation efforts and also plans, working with management in the implementation of the new ERP system, to have required fields, so when we do have advising notes entered into colleague and Civitas, that those would be required fields to ensure consistency in future years. Before I go to the next page, any questions?
None, you proceed.
Thank you. And our final follow-up is grant management. So this audit was originally performed in 2018. We had six partially remediated findings. We were able to close this audit as well, ensure that all six of those are fully remediated. The first was procedures. Were able to validate a grants development handbook was created, finalized, along with a Grant Starter Kit, which was disseminated to all those at the college that manage and use grants, including all their principal investigators. The second was training. And so annual training is provided by the grants department. Attendance is being tracked, and there's also a SharePoint site that has also been developed that shows all available training, including those available for state or federal funds. Also, the tracking of awards. So this is ensuring that we have one grant portfolio for the college that has all the awards that have been accepted and approved, who their principal investigators are, also what the funding is for those. And so we were able to validate that that has been in place and being tracked and monitored. The fifth one is communication of grant requirements. So this is ensuring that we get new grants, that all of that grant information is disseminated to the right folks, including your principal investigators, any other stakeholders that are utilizing grant funds. We are able to see project kickoff checklist, also referring back to the Grant Starter Kit and your handbook that has those grant requirements set up and also validated that that did occur with a sample population. Lastly, is approving reports. This included both financial and programmatic reports. We validated that the review of financial and programmatic reports is being performed. So we have a reviewer and approver for each one of those, and is documented in checklists that are prescribed to be completed in the Grants Development Handbook. So with those, we were able to remediate all those open findings with grant management and do not have any further recommendations. Any questions on that follow-up?
Hearing none, you may proceed.
Great, thank you. Appreciate your time.
So as you can see, there's quite a bit of progress made on all the follow-ups. So that's a great reflection of the staff's effort throughout the college. Moving on to the construction management. So we completed that audit September 8th and sent a draft report that's been issued. You have the full report, and we presented the draft to the audit committee. That report did receive an unsatisfactory rating overall. There were a few findings in there of high nature and moderate nature of risk. The scope of this audit included everything from the master development plan through the entire construction management process, from the purchasing procurement cycle through the award of contracts, project management, then monitoring contracts for compliance for insurance, warranties and bonds, and then the final accounting for construction projects. There were, I believe, eight total findings. And you'll see here on our table how the objectives, we broke out the objectives. One was the design of the internal controls over the construction management process. Two was the performance of some of those controls, the critical selected controls that we tested. And then C is actually contract compliance through the contracts for the master developer, architect, contractors, and subcontractors. So you see objectives A and B received unsatisfactory ratings due to the findings that we identified, and objective C received a satisfactory rating. That's how we arrived at the overall assessment of unsatisfactory. The findings really centered around this first one. It's kind of the linchpin for all the rest. We did cover all, you know, a lot of detail with the audit committee. The fact that there was not standard operating procedures that sort of guided and governed the entire construction management process, it really falls, that's sort of, like I said, the linchpin that creates all the rest of the findings. Lack of standardization of procedures and what documents we keep, where we keep them, how we keep them, and then the different elements of the process. That leads us into finding two about file maintenance and documentation. Ultimately, there were quite a few pieces of the files that were missing as far as sort of artifacts and mile markers of the construction process, sign-offs, approvals. And you'll see that through the rest of the findings. One thing to note that we do mention in the report and in the background is this does span several different people of responsibility. We, our coverage period was fairly long, and when we looked at multiple different construction projects, there was a third party who was responsible for construction project management. And then under college leadership, there were about three different people during the timeframe that we looked at on some of these builds that were responsible for the documentation and managing and monitoring. So it's not necessarily a current reflection of who's in leadership now, but this is a historical lookback of what construction looked like during the time of the four projects that we looked at. And that's, I think, part of why we need the standard operating procedures as part of finding one that help govern and document where we're going to keep files, how we're going to maintain them going forward. You'll see in findings three, with change order requests, we looked and sampled some change order requests, and there was not evidence in review and approval of one of the change order requests. That was related to the General Academic and Music Building. We didn't have evidence of approval by the architect and the chief physical facilities officer. So again, that was just, not that it wasn't approved, we're not saying the change order was not approved because it's gone through multiple pay applications, it was seen, it was documented through that manner. We just didn't have the physical evidence of the sign-off and approval. Finding four, related to insurance certificate monitoring. This is more of a procedural process, so again, relating back to the key processes and procedures of a procedure to monitor insurance certificates, to make sure that when an insurance certificate expires, that we're getting a renewed one in time, so there's no gap in coverage. We did not identify any gaps in coverage for insurance. However, we also, you know, we're looking at the process as well. So there's not any long-term effect on that, but we do have a process recommendation for approval. The construction bonds, we did identify where one of the projects, we didn't have evidence where that bond was obtained prior to the start of the project. So we identified where there were bonds in place a year after the start of construction had commenced, but the process to verify that everything's in place before the notice to proceed was issued, we didn't identify where that took place. On finding six, we did not have evidence where the, one of the payments was authorized to be sent out, one of five. We weren't able to identify where that was finally approved. Finding seven, this one has to do with the changeover from when a project goes from a construction in progress to final and complete. There should be a handover of critical documents, checklist for completion, to take things from an operations, or sorry, from a construction in progress to an operations and maintenance phase. As I explained to the audit committee, this typically is an issue in a lot of organizations because there are two departments. You have a construction department, then you have a maintenance, facilities, maintenance, and operations group. And so sometimes there's a difficulty in making sure that all the construction documents, the warranty documents, the user manuals, all those things are handed over. Here is a little bit different because you have one department in charge of both. So it's a little less critical as far as knowing where those things are, but really having that formal process to move it from a construction in progress to a completed, to where we have ongoing maintenance plans. The effect of this is usually you run into a lot of deferred maintenance because it didn't, things never make it to the maintenance plan. And so it can snowball and create a whole different set of issues with deferred maintenance. So having a, recognizing that we need a formal process as part of our standard procedures to move from a construction in progress to a complete phase where we know we have all the right documents, user manuals, as-built drawings, et cetera, and moving into that maintenance phase is something we recommend. And then as part of the other incomplete documentation, we looked at four different projects to look at insurance coverage. And because one of the pages in one of those contracts is, you know, we had all the other pages except for one, that one page had to deal with the insurance coverage requirements, and we didn't have that in the record, so we weren't able to validate that the insurance coverage that was obtained was what was according to the contract. So that was a contract compliance issue. So that was the one finding that we had in that objective C. So those are the eight findings that we have related to the construction management audit. Now, we had a lot of discussion at the audit committee, but I know there were others who may not have attended that meeting, so I'll open for any questions.
Any questions?
I do have a question.
Mr. Bennett, yes.
Can we tell if there were any accounting personnel involved in the design of this internal control system?
Any accounting personnel? Not that, well, I guess which part of it, because there's multiple parts. As far as, are you talking from procurement, are you talking about payment, or overall project management?
Overall project management. You're finding a lot of weaknesses. And it looks to me like it was designed by somebody other than an accountant.
It would have been, I do believe, yes, that it would have been developed by someone other than an accountant because the, typically, the part of the construction and management process is designed by someone who's responsible for the construction in progress, not for the ultimate end accounting of it. So that, the accounting piece would come a little bit on the procurement side, but mainly on the recording and booking of the construction costs to the official college financial records.
Well, and I'm looking at the report, and it's disturbing to me, but it's not surprising. But we've got so many weaknesses here. I know, I know that Mr. Stravas inherited all of this. But these still exist, so he probably inherited a lot more than what we're seeing that he's already corrected. You audit by sampling, and your sample looks like you've got some bad results. Do you need to extend your procedures?
Based on what we found in the design of these, I think it's a fairly representative sample. Usually when we identify issues of this nature, we'll find them being pervasive throughout the rest of the population. Again, it's sampling, so I can't say that with 100% certainty. But as far as determining to expand the sample, we did look at projects from a span of time, including some of the most recent, so I don't know that expanded testing would be necessary. There could be other procedures we perform in construction, you know, down the road. But as far as this audit, I didn't think expanded sampling was going to be necessary to identify any other additional issues.
On the performance bond, did we actually ask the general contractor for a copy of that performance bond?
No, sir, we didn't dig down to the level of going back to vendors and contractors for other documentation. We were, because this was not it over the college's processes. We absolutely can do that, or the college can do that, to make sure that it was in place. But as far as the internal process for construction management was the scope of the audit.
It's concerning to me because it seems to me that we have to have a performance bond in place before we begin the construction, or we're probably not in compliance with an awful lot of things, including our own contract.
Agreed. That is why, you know, that we have the, one of the big general issues of the missing documentation and the gaps in documentation and coming up with a system of obtaining and storing that. You know, I do know that there are quite a few boxes that were inherited of paper copies that are still, you know, in the process of being scanned and somehow managed into, in document management. This wasn't a document management audit. So there's possibility that they're tucked away in some box someplace. That's why we characterized as we weren't able to identify or have examples of it. We didn't say it didn't exist, we just said we weren't able to obtain a copy of it because of that, that issue.
And I wonder if this indicates that Mr. Stravas doesn't have enough staff?
We did not do a staffing analysis on this, but I'm sure he has an opinion on that. And I can definitely let him respond to that, to that question.
I would like, I'd like to hear his opinion, actually.
We had a lengthy discussion at the audit committee meeting, and that was one of the issues that was brought forward to the board. We discussed that, that in order to correct these situations, definitely need additional support personnel. Yes, sir.
Very good, thank you.
Yes, sir.
That's all the questions I have right now.
Any other questions? The board? Anything further on your report at this time?
Not on construction management, no, ma'am.
Can I just make a quick comment?
Please.
We did have the same concerns that Regent Bennett had related to the findings. We feel that it's real necessary for us to come, come up as an entity with standard operating procedures. The construction activity may slow down, but we're still going to need to come up with standard operating procedures. And we asked for some recommendations from our auditor. And we work with Mr. Stravos, so they might be able to come up with templates to be able to put together those standard operating procedures in the easiest way and in order to be able to expedite the number of standard operating procedures we're going to need going forward. So again, concerns that the Regent Bennett has were both highlighted by myself and by Chairman Scott. Yes.
Questions, discussion?
General comment?
Please.
Just for, for everybody listening to this sort of, this sort of process of the internal audit, internal audit has been going on for years here at the college. And this is how the college improves its processes. We look internally, we look at the mirror. These, these, these results are reported to the state and the like. But I want everyone who's, who's listening to this to understand that, that we continue to stand by and stand with our partners at Weaver, to look ourselves, to look at ourselves in the mirror so that we can improve. You know, we want to see where our inherent weaknesses are, so that as we do go forth, that we are resourced adequately, resourced properly, positioned properly, and have the mechanisms that are, that are necessary to move this college into the future. There's still construction to go on, there's still, there's always going to be technology, there's always going to be various other student-related processes and HR processes and the like. So I just want everybody to know that this is, this is something we take very seriously. I want to thank all the staff members who have come up and put lots and lots of work into these processes to get us to where we are today. We're not, we're not done yet, but the work that has been done is very quality work, and the college is much better off for it. And I want to thank, again, thank our partners at Weaver.
Do you have a comment?
Yeah, when was the last construction management audit that we had prior to this one?
I do not recall one.
A long time.
Yeah.
Ever?
I do not recall having one here at all, since I've been here, so.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, over 10 years.
Not since we've been your internal auditors, no, which has been quite a while. I think we're in year seven or eight.
Okay, thank you.
Management did respond to these, these findings, they're all here about developing, you know, actually, they agreed. you know, actually, they agreed, agreed to commit to developing standard operating procedures. As Mr. Garza said, we did talk about and discuss some, some opportunities, just as we as your internal auditor helped develop some, through the policy project earlier in the year where we did consulting procedures and worked through the policy project, there is an opportunity for us to be able to provide some assistance in helping develop standard operating procedures where, to be quite frankly, you know, we, we look at the ones from other clients that we've, where we've performed similar procedures, and we beg, borrow and steal from those and help create something based on what we know as best practices, what other, other of our clients in the same, you know, community college sector have done, and we do have that opportunity to provide the college assistance to help create a shell and customize it, which then the college can own, so we would not be auditing our own work going forward because the college would have to take and own and implement that, but there is an opportunity for that, which would include addressing several of these things like file maintenance, documentation, change order requests, payment authorizations, et cetera.
Do you have a comment?
Yeah, I'm, I'm hearing over and over again the potential, you know, we're not, our procedures are not tight enough. Is there any indication that public money was misspent or inefficiently spent, or the construction was more expensive than it should otherwise have been, or is it just the risk was there because we weren't managing it tightly enough?
Our procedures did not test for any cost compliance, so we didn't necessarily go back and look at the various material costs and validate them to market pricing. We can perform audits, and I have performed audits like that in the past for other clients, so that is a possibility. We did not identify any fraud or impropriety as part of the, the overall purchasing process and payment process. We did look at that cycle and look at the review of procurement as well as, so procuring the contracts, no procurement fraud or no indications of that, and then no indications of any payment fraud on the backend, because we did look at the payment of invoices. You'll notice the one finding for that, the payment authorization, that we weren't able to identify the ultimate approval, but we did not identify any other, anything that I think would rise to the need to perform additional investigative procedures because of any potential fraud or any other issues like that.
Okay, good.
Are you specifically asking that if, of those elements that were identified, were there any losses financially, is that?
Well, I'm understanding that.
Or also looking for other things?
They didn't do that work, but there's nothing indicating fraud or malfeasance in the work that they did do.
Exactly.
Am I understanding that correctly?
Yes, sir. The part, I said that we didn't do was necessarily like looking at, did the contractors bill you 10 bucks for sheetrock, and is that the current market price, or was it overinflated? We didn't perform that procedure. We did look at what was billed, was it reviewed, authorized, accepted, and a, and a valid payment. We looked at that piece, but we didn't look at the contractor's pricing side. That was the element that we did not look at, so.
I understand. Thank you.
Other questions, comments? On the board, I would, go ahead.
Thank you. So we do have one other audit that will present again in closed session due to the Public Information Act. The information related to information security and cybersecurity is a sensitive topic, so that'll be presented in closed session. So I'll skip over this slide, but we did want to present to you the annual internal audit report. So this is, should have been in your packet, a draft of the annual internal audit report. As a reminder, this is a report that the, that is prescribed by the state auditor's office, the content and format is prescribed by the state auditor's office. It's usually due November, well, it is due November 1st of 2022. We do have the one report of a procurement that's still outstanding, so in the draft copy that you have in your packet, you'll see there's a little highlighted section for the date of when that report will be completed. We anticipate that we'll complete that report this month, so we'll fill that in once, once it's complete. So this is a preliminary draft for your approval. There's been no changes in the guidance from the SAO from last year to this year, and the relevant sections, there's, the first section is a compliance paragraph where we say that the college will comply with the requirements to post the annual report on the website, on the college's website. It discloses the internal audit plan and the results of that plan for fiscal year 2021. It is, there's a disclosure in there about any consulting and non-audit services that we as your auditors have performed, so we did include in there the policy project where we provided some consulting there. It provides a copy of our quality assurance letter, so as part of being a public accounting firm in the state of Texas, we are subject to peer review, and we have our peer review, our most recent peer review letter in there. Then also, the internal audit plan for 2023 is in there, the proposed internal audit plan. So you'll see, the proposed internal audit plan includes, where's my copy? I'll pull that up in just a moment. It includes a copy of our annual internal audit plan. It also includes a disclosure of the external audit services, the financial statement services, that's Collier, Johnson &amp; Woods, we have to disclose the auditor, and then also the college's procedures for reporting fraud, waste and abuse. The audit plan, the proposed internal audit plan for fiscal year 2023 includes audit over the activities in the bursar's office, a payroll audit, an audit over safety and security at the college, and then follow-ups over information security, purchasing and construction management. So all the three audits that we performed this year, follow-up procedures over those audits. So any questions on the annual report?
No questions.
All right. Thank you very much.
Are we ready to move into closed session?
I believe so, yes, ma'am.
At that point, okay. On the items mentioned and on others, we will go into closed session, bear with me while I read the, the following. This move into closed session is made pursuant to Texas Government Code Section 551.071, consultation with legal counsel regarding pending or contemplated litigation or a settlement offer with possible discussion and action in open session, and the seeking of legal advice from counsel on pending legal or contemplated matters or claims with possible discussion and action in open session. And, second, Texas Government Code Section 551.074A1, personnel matters regarding the appointment, employment, evaluation, reassignment duties, discipline or dismissal of a public officer or employee with possible discussion and action in open session. Third, pursuant to Texas Government Code Section 551.076, deliberation regarding security devices or audits regarding the deployment or specific occasions for implementation of security personnel or devices or a security audit with possible discussion and action in open session. And, fourth, Texas Government Code Section 551.089, deliberation regarding security devices or audits regarding security assessments or deployments relating to information, resources, technology, network security information, or the deployment or specific occasions for implementation of security personnel, critical infrastructure or security devices with possible discussion and action in open session. The time is, who's got the time, 2:39. Thank you.
So with the presentation that we did in closed session, that concludes all the report presentations that we have for this update for you, and now all we need is the, the board to approve and accept the reports as presented.
All right, at this time, I would entertain a motion to accept and approve the report that we've just heard.
Okay, as a member of the audit committee, I will make that motion to approve their report.
Thank you, Regent. Second?
Second.
Okay, heard a second, all right. And is there any discussion, any discussion among the board? Any public comments on this topic? That in mind, we will act on the motion to accept and approve this report. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Seeing none, that motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
And with that, I believe there's no other matters before the board, unless I hear otherwise, so we are in adjournment. Thank you, at 3:49.